Begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Councilman Godbout, Councilman Hersberg, Councilman Protem Landau, absent excused, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman McDermott, Councilwoman Rakowski, Councilwoman Samby, absent excused, and Council President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is presented.
Thank you. We have a number of special presentations and announcements, so we'll get started right away with compassionate city. Mr. Barra?
Thank you, Council President. This will be the last celebration of our students from Wayne Westland School Compassion Project this school year, and we'll rifle this up here in the fall when school starts back up. And I'd like to invite John Dignan to come on up and superintendent of Wayne Westland Schools, and he'll introduce his team, who will then introduce our wonderful students. John?
Thank you. Again, good evening, City Council, Mayor. We want to thank you again for your partnership with Compassion Project, but I really want to invite Darrell Beevy and Amanda Dybus. They've been the backbone for it on our end, and some of the things that they've done this year have been incredible. I also would like to ask one of our school board members, Kimberly May, to come up so we can present our kids. But again, this is going to be kind of in this year. As Mr. Barra said, we'll launch it again in the fall, but I'm really proud of our staff and students because they're incredible and have gone through a lot, and every day they show their best, so I'm grateful. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Beevy now to introduce the students.
Thank you so much. Should I speak from here or?
Trey. Trey.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Dignan. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight, and we're excited to celebrate our students, so we won't be late at the time. We're going to start with Switzer Elementary, and on tonight, we're going to recognize Tessa Prisbilla. Tessa is also represented by her principal, so we're going to ask Principal Ricky and also if Bren Majuski could come up and join us up here, join us up here. And so Tessa was nominated by her teacher for being caught spreading kindness by being a leader every day in class, helping others, and being a friend to everyone. Since she has been in kindergarten, Tessa has led by example with her friendly and helpful personality, and we are so lucky that she is a Switzer stinger. So we're going to ask Tessa to come on up. Let's clap for Tessa. Thank you, Tessa. Also, on tonight, we're going to recognize a student from Taff Galloway Elementary. We're going to ask Candace Lindsay to come on up first. It's Candace. Come on up, Candace. Clap for Candace. The staff attending tonight is also Jessica Clark. Jessica, if you could come on up as well. A little spread out. In Candace's random act of kindness, Candace was cleaning up the classroom when all of her peers went out on recess. Candace is a very polite and sweet young girl. She is very happy, excuse me, helpful, and is always capable of making others smile. Let's give her another round of applause. We'll ask her family if they'll come on up. You can come up. Thank you. Let's clap for the family. All right, we also want to recognize a student from Winter Walker Elementary, Uritsi Antonio Omos. Uritsi, come on up. All right. And the staff attending is Joelle Summers, the school social worker. Would you come join us also? Uritsi's act of kindness, she was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Cloak, for helping two classmates with their work. Uritsi is such a polite and helpful student that loves to encourage her peers to do well. She is often one of the first students to volunteer to help her classroom and walk her as a whole. Let's give her a round of applause. Mom, if you want to come up, and her parents with us, come on. We're making room for you tonight. All right, and finally, we have a little one from Stottermeyer, Stottermeyer Early Childhood Family Development Center, Chloe Phalas. Come on up, Chloe. Staff attending is Amy Coatsworth. Chloe has done a fantastic job at being a class leader. She's always willing to help a classmate who is having a difficult day and is so inclusive with all of her peers. Chloe meets all the staff members with a big smile and excitement to learn every single day. This year, her kind, sensitive, compassionate, and joyous personality have blossomed and bloomed. Let's give her a round of applause. Parents, if you want to come up as well?
Okay, nobody move. We've got something special. I'd like to invite Deputy Mayor Mike Ready to come down, Deputy Clerk Shannon Inman, and Council President Jim Hart. They have something for you, and we'll have a nice picture, then we'll head out into the lobby where you can get some more photos, and the meeting can continue. Come on up.
Okay, we'll have everyone squished together. Make sure the children are in front, please. Thank you. Okay, we'll do this on three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right, we'll give a minute for the students to go outside and get a photo, and Director Barra has some more announcements for us.
All right, Council President. Today, I'm pleased and honored to introduce Council to a new member of our volunteer community. Mrs. Laura Fritz is the co-founder of the Westland Volunteer Corps, and last weekend, they went out and took care of some gardening and yard cleanup for some of our senior residents. But she's got something special that she's been working on, so I want to invite Laura to come on up and tell Council and the residents what she's working on. They might want to participate. So Laura?
Thank you. Hello, nice to meet everybody. So typically, when people think about volunteer projects, they think about park cleanups, planting flowers in trees, park benches, and so on. When I co-founded this group, I wanted to offer something special and different to the community. There are a lot of people who would like to give back, but not everyone can do the more physical work that is more typical of volunteer projects. So this is why we thought about the possibility of educational seminars and workshops. They not only offer opportunities for volunteers, but also benefit the community as well. So for the first seminar, it's going to be a pet health seminar on June 11th at 10 o'clock in the morning. Why pet health? There has been an increase of pet ownership over the past few years with COVID, so we have more people that will benefit from this information. If you have a pet, you have noticed that vet offices are very crazy right now. It's really hard to get in. So anything that we can do to increase our knowledge on pet health and preventive care will be beneficial to everyone. Also, emergency vet bills can be very costly, so the information covered will be relevant to the Westland community because the topics are actually ideas that were submitted by Westland residents. I reached out on social media and got a list from our residents regarding things that they want to learn more about. So topics included pet toy safety, diet, you know, there's the, sorry, and the discussion of, you know, raw feeding, grain-free diets and stuff like that. So we have a guest speaker, Dr. David Latier from Westland Veterinary Hospital. He is working on the presentation as we speak. So I'm very excited to have him on our side, so we're hoping for a good turnout. Again, that is June 11th at 10:00 a.m. at the Wayne Ford Civic League, so I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll make sure that we get that information to Mr. Wykenbach, our social media guru here at the City Hall, and we'll make sure we get that communication out and get some people there. Thank you, Laura. Okay, last thing. I know we want to get on with the business of the meeting, but we got the Memorial Day Parade coming up. We've had great response to the online registration applications. I think I've got a dozen or so. This is going to be one of the biggest parades in terms of length and the amount of participants that we've seen here in the city of Westland in a lot of years. But there's still room, so if you or your group, you got a scouting pack, you got a Girl Scout group, you got a Glee team, I don't care, you want to march in the Memorial Day Parade and recognize the sacrifices of our veterans, you are welcome. So please, go online, fill out the registration application. We're in the final planning phases for the parade. Police chief's team is on board. They're already got this down. We've done this several years. The parade route's been established. We no longer interrupt the local business community along Ford Road like we did in years past. So this parade's really come a long way, and there's a lot of room for residents to be along the parade route, relaxed, comfortably. We have restroom facilities right in our premier park, Central City Park, Tatten Park area. And we really want you to come out. I believe the new branded spray zone is going to be open that weekend. In fact, my job depends on it. So that spray zone's going to be open, so great weekend coming up for the residents, for the Memorial Day Parade. So please come on out. But if you want to register and join, we've got room for you. That part of the planning's not complete until a couple of days before, so you're welcome. Thank you, Council. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Barra. Next, I'll invite up Miriam Katie.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. Council President and members, Fire and Police Department and Chief and our attorney at present here. I really appreciate your time always, and we're excited because we are able to finally have a Westland Wayne Relay for Life in person this year. So we're back on track on June 11th and 12th, starting at 11:00 a.m. We would love to have you out there. The opening ceremony is at that time. And right after that, we will recognize our survivors by a lap. That's how we kick off the relay and then back into our survivor luncheon to treat them and just be there for them and all throughout the day. We're there for 20 hours, so we'll all be able to give you, and we will be posting our activity list. And also, I want to mention that we have our usual, at 1:00, we're having our red, white, and blue first responder in honoring our first responder lab, which we love to have that. So anyone that would like to come out and share the money, or if you want to be a participant and do the lab, we would love to have you. But there's so many things that are going on. We're trying to raise money, obviously. It's been tough, but we're almost at 20,000, so we're really excited about that. Our goal is 25,000. We want to look forward to that day when we can get back up to our 70,000, but we're working up to that. We have 21 teams. We're excited about that. And just, you know, we do this because, just like a lot of you know that, we've known people, loved ones, friends, so many people that have been touched by cancer, and we want to hopefully someday, for me not to be up there saying we're having a Relay for Life, that we don't have to have that anymore. But it's going to, you know, it takes time and it takes a group of us, and we are better together. And we just want to make sure that everybody knows it's not too late to be a sponsor also. We have actually, to the end of this month, they extended a little bit of time, so anybody that would like to be a sponsor and even be a team, you can even still join. So let me give you real quick, I will have flyers out front, but our Relay for Life website is relayforlife.org/westlandwayneami. And Carol is our chair again this year, which we're so thankful for, and we have such a great lead team. And once again, my name's Miriam, and I am the Westland Wayne Relay for Life community and media lead. So I really appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, please let me know, and like I said, our flyers will be out front. Thank you so much. It means so much to me for you to have me here. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Miriam. Okay, last announcement for the day is an administrative announcement for Council and everyone. New business item one, new business item one has been pulled from the submitter, from the petitioner, excuse me. Item number one has been pulled, I couldn't think of the word. Item one has been pulled from the petitioner from new business. So with that, we'll move into questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be answered during the agenda following a motion and support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? All right, seeing none, I'll move, close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
I have motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held May 2nd, 2022. Approval of bid for asphalt repair and maintenance services. Administration recommends bid award extension with K&amp;B Asphalt Company and bidary contractors for an additional three years on an as-needed basis. Approval of bid for Westchester Drive Road and Water Reconstruction Project. Administration recommends low bidder Great Lakes contracting. Total amount not to exceed $1,542,384.30. Approval of emergency medical supply vendors for the Westland Fire Department. Administration recommends Stryker Medical and Teleflex as the emergency medical supply vendors on an as-needed basis. Term of these internal authorizations shall be for periods of three years and five years respectively. Approval of workers' compensation coverage agreement with Willis Towers Watson Midwest, Inc. for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 for the city's self-insured program. Agreement is for a one-year period effective July 1st, 2022, amount of $97,590. And the last item approved on the consent calendar is adoption of non-motorized transportation plan. Administration recommends 2021 walk-in role pedestrian bicycle safety action plan be adopted. Moving to the next item, payment of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving to new business item number two. Approval of proposed land division parcel number 049050981301 southwest corner of Ford Road in Newburgh. This is Planning Department number 2196G. Planning Commission recommends approval and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
I have a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Excuse me, let me back that up. Mo?
Thanks, Council President. The property here is located at the southeast corner of Ford Road in Newburgh. It's highlighted in yellow on your screen. There was a recent property split that I'll talk about, so the property lines are kind of funky and not updated, but essentially, we are talking about the portion between the yellow and the red lines on the screen. Property is currently zoned PUD and vacant. On March 1st of 2022, the City Council granted approval for the proposed land division that split the property into two, also shown on the screen, to accommodate Dairy Queen and Tommy's Car Wash Development. At this meeting, the City Council also approved a site plan for the Dairy Queen drive-through restaurant. Tonight, the petitioner is requesting to split off that 43-foot western portion of the property to sell to the adjacent property owner that owns this former auto-related use, rather building. And as a result, the owner of that building and property will have to combine the 43-foot wide parcel if it's approved to create a conforming parcel. And if that happens, both parcels will continue to comply with the minimum zoning requirements. And the property owner of the auto repair use did file all the combination paperwork, so it will be processed if the land division is approved tonight. The administration and Planning Commission recommend approval. The Planning Commission heard this item at the May 4th Planning Commission meeting. Be happy to answer any questions. Mark Dur from the Dairy Queen Restaurant is also in attendance tonight. Thanks.
Will the owner of the Dairy Queen have anything to add? No? All right. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business item number three. Approval of site plan and special land use for proposed marijuana collocated facility 37501 and 37505 Cherry Hill west of Newburgh on the south side of Cherry Hill. This is Planning Department number 1879C. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to the conditions described in the planning communication memo.
I have a motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mo?
Thanks, Council President. The subject property here is owned I-2. That's our general industrial district. The applicant is seeking site plan approval for a 6,000-square-foot marijuana retail store that will be in the front here and also about a 21,000-square-foot marijuana cultivation and processing center that will be in this area over here. Currently, the site is undeveloped, about 5.5 acres with frontage along Cherry Hill. The proposal indicates an existing two-story house on this parcel here that will also be demolished as part of this project. Some site characteristics, there will be one full-service driveway, providing access to the site. The site contains 104 off-street parking spaces, which is in compliance for the required parking for both retail operation and the cultivation operation. There's a proposed landscaping plan that is in full compliance and exceeds our zoning requirements. There's a proposed stormwater detention basin that complies with Wayne County's stormwater management requirements. Exterior lighting is also provided in accordance with the site lighting ordinance and our zoning ordinance. The proposed buildings comply with the bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance, not requiring any dimensional variances. This includes height of both buildings, lot coverage of the total parcel, setbacks, front, side, and rear. The Planning Commission heard this at the April Planning Commission meeting, I believe, and is recommending approval subject to the following conditions, which the property owner and which the property owner and developer is aware of, but I'll read them on the record really quickly. The facility must employ a facility-wide odor control plan designed for marijuana cultivation. The odor control plan must be approved prior to issuance of building permits or building official review and approve that. A security plan that complies with marijuana business ordinance must be adhered to and submitted to the police department, which already has been done. The marijuana business licensee shall enter into a legally binding community benefits agreement, which also has already been done. Continued compliance with all applicable local and state laws, including the marijuana business ordinance. All signage and advertising must comply with that ordinance. And finally, hours of operation to the public shall be limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. This is a rendering of the retail facility that will front and be directly adjacent to Cherry Hill. And this is the grow cultivation center that will be tucked behind that retail building off of Cherry Hill. Kurt Malino from Kingship is in the audience, and I can answer any questions you have as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mo. Does petitioner have anything to offer?
Gratitude. Thank you for the city of Westland, for your hard work and your due diligence on even putting the ordinance together and the application process with something else too. But here we are today, and we look forward to investing in your community and building a beautiful project for you guys and for us.
Me too. Is there any discussion from the maker or supporter?
First off, wanted to thank you for your investment here in our city. This is a substantial project. This has been a long vacated parcel there that used to be an old, you know, junkyard. So we're really pleased to have your investment in the community. Just a real quick question. How much remediation work has to go on at that site prior to the development, given what used to be there previously?
Well, we're going to have the engineer company come out when we start, you know, doing some test holes and some cleanup. But, you know, from what we see, most of it's, you know, surface damage. There was one little trailer that, you know, had 50-gallon drums of oil that they dumped there. And it's a small area, you know, not this big, you know. The whole site isn't super contaminated. We did move some material around. We do see that there has been some, you know, concrete brought in. I actually think that property at one time was used as a concrete plant when they put in Cherry Hill, because we have a little slab back there where it looks like they had made concrete. So there's quite a bit of history on that property. It'll be nice to clean it up, though, you know. It's a challenged property for me. I've been doing this for 35 years as far as the development. And, you know, so we look forward to really turning something that's a little blighted into a beautiful project for the community and ourselves, too.
Good, Councilman. Anything from the supporter? All right. Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Godbell?
Thanks. I just wanted to thank you. Your renderings look great. It's going to make a huge impact
We're excited.
in that, in that area on Cherry Hill, so.
I think so.
Best of luck to you.
Yeah, and we run it clean. You guys will see, you'll be proud of it. All right, is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mo, for all your help.
New business item number four. Approval of special land use for proposed hookah smoking lounge located at 2733 South Wayne, east side of South Wayne, north of Glenwood. This is planning department number 1352F. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to the conditions described in the planning communication memo.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Supported by Councilman Godbell. Mo?
Thank you. The proposed hookah lounge is located within the Washington Square, a retail plaza on the northeast corner of Glenwood and Wayne. The property is zoned CB2, low-intensity commercial business district. Washington Square currently includes a variety of office and commercial uses with some vacant units scattered throughout the site. Petitioner proposes to locate a hookah lounge in a vacant, approximately 2,200-square-foot vacant space. Live entertainment and food service will not be provided onsite and part of the operation. The site is currently accessed via three full-service driveways at Glenwood, where my cursor is, and then one full-service driveway at Wayne Road. There's not much site, site modifications being proposed here. The site complies with previously approved site plan for parking containing 169 spaces, sufficient for the existing uses and the proposed hookah lounge. The site does contain existing screening wall along the north and west sides of the property, screening this residential. There is no wall along Christine here on the eastern portion, which would be required today if there was massive, major improvements or modifications triggering that. But this is not triggering that element. The location of the proposed hookah lounge is not expected to generate a significant amount of traffic to cause negative impacts on Wayne Road. Hookah lounges generally operate during off-peak evening hours. There are conditions that we have imposed on the current hookah lounge in the city to mitigate any impacts on commercial businesses in the area or residential business, residential homes in the area. And we haven't had those issues at the existing one. So we are recommending those conditions be imposed on this hookah lounge as well. The business owner is aware and has agreed. I'll read the conditions on the record. But the administration and planning commission are both recommending approval subject to these conditions, which are: The smoking lounge establishment must close for business at 2:00 a.m. daily. There shall be no live entertainment at the venue. Food service operations and preparation are prohibited within the smoking lounge. This is consistent with state law. Dining of carryout food or food properly brought on the premises by a customer may be permitted in compliance with Michigan's smoke-free indoor air law. A state tobacco exemption from NDHHS must be granted for this facility, which I know the business owners are working towards obtaining. All smoking lounge business activities shall be conducted wholly indoors unless otherwise approved by the city council. A clearly visible notice shall be posted by the entry door to the premises that states no minors are permitted on the premises. And finally, all smoking lounge operations shall be constructed, maintained, and operated in accordance with all federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. That's all I have. The business owners, Raquel and Waker, are both here tonight as well. Thank you.
Do petitioners have anything they'd like to add?
Hello, I'm Raquel, this is Waker. We're also residents of the city of Westland. Just wanted to bring, not entertainment, but somewhere to relax and to enjoy that's close to home.
Like it. Anything else?
I think she comes.
Yeah. There you go. Well, is there any, any input from the maker or supporter? All right. Is there any discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business item number five. Approval of site plan for proposed building addition and pickup window for the existing Texas Roadhouse Restaurant located at 36750 Ford Road, north side of Ford Road, east of Newburgh. This is planning department number 1690R. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mo?
Okay, thanks. The subject property here is about 2.7 acres in area, zoned SPD, special planned development, that's our old PUD district, and developed with a Texas Roadhouse Restaurant. The petitioner, Texas Roadhouse, is requesting site plan approval to construct a 1,100-square-foot addition. This will accommodate a carryout area, an expanded waiting room, a pickup window, and a larger area for coolers and freezer, freezers. This addition is being proposed in this area over here on the northwest side of the building. There is a pickup window, so that's kind of the major site impact. It is not a traditional drive-thru operation with a full-service ordering station and things like that. It's just a pickup window where people call in advance. Some site characteristics they may be interested in. Existing site access is not being modified. Ford Road access point will be maintained. Site signage throughout the site will include entry-only stop-and-do-not-enter signs with a variety of pavement markings to efficiently route the traffic operations for the drive-through, I'm sorry, pickup window. Parking will remain at 180 spaces. There is no impact or displacement of existing parking. There is a colored rendering. The addition will match the existing color of brick and accent material. Bulk requirements such as lock coverage, height, and setbacks are all still in full compliance, and there will continue to be an existing dumpster enclosure. The administration and planning commission both recommend approval, and the Texas Roadhouse team is here to answer any questions you have.
Would the Texas Roadhouse team like to go ahead and add anything else? Okay. All right, is there anything from the maker or supporter?
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you to our petitioners for being here this evening. I think anybody who travels through Westland sees how busy Texas Roadhouse is. It's one of our busiest restaurants, if not the busiest restaurant. And so I just wanted to thank you for continuing to invest in your property. I was one of the people that frequented during the pandemic and noticed that you were doing everything you could. And you certainly are, I think, hitting it right on target with adding that window. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition. And I'm very happy to see that you're not eliminating any of the parking, because that would have been a nightmare.
We appreciate that.
But thank you for your continued investment in our, our community.
Absolutely. Thanks for allowing it.
Nothing from the supporter? Any other discussion?
I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleague. I am no, my family is no stranger to your facility, so we come in there quite often. I'm glad to hear that there's no parking impact as well, because it's, we've had a tough time at times. And you guys have a good problem going on there, I think. You're very busy. The residents of the city of Westland love your location, love your store, so happy that you're putting this in and more waiting rooms, so more people have somewhere to sit. I personally get bored sitting in my car. I'd rather sit in there and watch, so if there's room to sit, that's nice. So I'm happy that there's not an order window. I didn't think that would have been possible anyway with the nature of your business, but had there been, we might have had some concerns with the neighbors. The only thing I want to do is make sure, and I think you guys are doing it, and I haven't had any concerns or callbacks yet, is the residents right behind you. As long as we can keep your noise where you're at, no complaints. I think that everybody in this council just tickled pink of what you're doing and adding the space. And I'll continue to come in there. And a little plug for you guys, I'm kind of picky with my steak, but you guys do a good job in a porterhouse. You're one of the few places I can go and not be upset about it. You guys do a good job. So that's all my comments. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any, any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Get it done.
We appreciate your time, words. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone on my right? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to comment from the administration. Is there anything from the mayor's office today?
Thank you, Council President. I think Vic Bear covered all of our talking points earlier, so thanks.
Very good. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Council President, thank you. Nothing at this time?
Very good. Well, now we'll move to the comments from the council, begin this evening with Councilman Mike McDermott.
Well, good evening and thank you, Council President. First off, I want to start by congratulating the compassionate students. This is the last group of students that we're going to be having in here this year. But this is a wonderful program that really allows the community to highlight the great work that the students here in the city of Westland are doing. So to Chloe, Candace, Uritzi, and Tessa, thank you for your compassionate and kind acts in the school district. You really make your school a better place. So thank you for those kids who, you know, really volunteered and stepped up and showed kindness and compassion in their school. I wasn't able to attend due to a work conflict, but I wanted to congratulate Officer Eric Monson and the chief, on Eric being the Officer of the Year here in the city of Westland. I wished I could have been there on Friday, but it is no small feat in the Department of 81 officers to stand out from the pack and become Officer of the Year. So congratulations to Officer Monson in his well-deserved and earned award as our Officer of the Year here in the city of Westland. Also wanted to highlight that if you may have saw Channel 4 News the other night, we were on the news for some really good reasons. And that's because our chief, our Chief of Police Jeff DeRuzick and the Westland Police Department has really opened up and engaged in an innovative program to hire a social worker here in the city. We partnered with Higera Health. This was an initiative that, you know, many of us on council wanted to see happen. And the police chief, DeRuzick, was really the driving force behind this. So I'm really excited at the work that we're doing and the work that we will continue to do with our partnership with Higera Health and the social worker here in Westland. So if you have the chance, it's on the city administration page to watch the Channel 4 article about the partnership with Higera and the social worker that we hired here in Westland. And again, want to give thanks to Chief DeRuzick and the entire police department for really opening up some new innovative ideas here in the city and making that partnership happen with Higera. I want to thank Miriam Cady and the entire team. It's not just Miriam. We know that it's a whole, you know, army of volunteers that make the Westland Wayne Relay for Life possible each and every year. It's nice to get back in person. Again, if you want to participate, I know Miriam mentioned it earlier, but you can go to relayforlife.org/westlandwayneamI. Again, relayforlife.org/westlandwayneamI. Sign up, donate. If you have a team that wants to get involved, get them involved as well. So thank you to Miriam and the entire team for all the great work you do to kick cancers. But one day, we're not going to have to do this, because we're going to beat cancer, and that'll be, that'll be the best day. But until then, I hope everybody can get involved. I wanted to know that for a couple of the Clyde Smith residents who reached out to me, I know the administration's on top of that, Mo and the planning department. So thank you for reaching out, but the administration is already on top of that and one step ahead. But appreciate your reaching out. This month, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, and as many of you may be aware of, it is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so with that, I think there's a lot that we can do here in the city of Westland on mental health. And I look forward to working with my colleagues, with the administration, with residents in the community to really, in the future here, flush out more of what we can do in the city in regards to mental health and making sure that the well-being, the brain health issues, and the mental health of our residents is taken care of year-round. One of the big things that I would like to explore in addition to the partnership that we have with Higera is any potential partnerships that we can do for free, reduced-price counseling, therapy services. I know oftentimes, especially in a working-class community like this, people may not know where to turn or have the resources available to them or have, they may be underinsured or have no insurance at their work to get therapy or counseling, or maybe that's not covered by their insurance. So anything that we can do in that community here to help provide that support or direct people in the, in the right direction to get the mental health support that they need is something that I really want to explore with my colleagues in the future. And then beyond that, I want to thank everybody that was involved in the walk-in role program. I know Councilman Godbell here on our city council really worked to spearhead that initiative. This was a long time coming. I know this is something that Jim and many others have, you know, kicked around for a long time. And this year and last year, their hard work really made it happen. So really excited about the walk-in role program getting rolled out here in Westland. And with that, if anybody needs anything, as always, I'm available on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, or anytime at 734-890-2146. With a call and text, please treat yourself with respect, courtesy, and kindness. And please have a great and wonderful evening, and we'll see you all out there at the Memorial Day Parade and at the Relay. Thank you.
All set? Yep. Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you, Council President. Nothing tonight. I'll just remind everybody that, once again, that the parade is Sunday, May 29th, at 1:00. And just remind everybody to get there a little bit early, because they close the roads. Starts at John Glenn, goes up Carlson, up Central City Parkway to the library. So hope to see everybody there. And I want to say welcome to the new business owners of the hookah lounge, and best of luck to you guys. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski?
Thank you, Council President. Well, good evening, everyone. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. These meetings that we have where we honor our young children are especially my favorites. And so I'd like to congratulate- our young children are especially my favorites, and so I'd like to congratulate once again Tessa, Candace, Uritzi, and our youngest recipient, Ms. Chloe. And she's really proving that there really isn't no age requirement to being kind, so thank you for being caught being kind. And as we go into our summer vacation here, I would just really like for our kids in our community to think of ways that they can be kind to their neighbors. Maybe we're offering to help somebody with their yard care, or watching the dog, or even pulling up the garbage cans. So do something to brighten somebody's day and let that be part of the spirit that you enjoy your summer with. And I'm looking forward to seeing how more children are going to participate with us in the fall. I'm really excited to see our two, one's very new, the new hookah lounge coming. One's been a long time in the works with Kingship and the reinvestment in our community. And we talk about there being recessions and inflation, but here in Westland, we're seeing a lot of things going full steam ahead, and it's just, there's a lot of community pride, and we should all be really thankful about the community that we live in, that people want to invest here, and they want to continue doing business here. So that's great. And just to echo some of the sentiments, we do have our memorial parade on Sunday, the 29th. As Councilman Hersberg said, it starts at John Glenn at 1:00 p.m. I think it was very wise to add, get there early. They will close the roads. And yes, it starts at John Glenn and it ends at the library, but it doesn't end at the library. There's a very special program that is presented by the Bova, VFW Post 9885, that really commemorates the sacrifice of the fallen veterans, and that's really what Memorial Day is about, is recognizing the sacrifice of our fallen veterans. So if you can take a pause of your holiday weekend and take a moment and remember those folks, that would be fantastic, and I think you would be very moved by the presentation, because there's a staggering number of people that have sacrificed for our lives. So with that, I wish you good night and wish you peace.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Gattow?
Thanks. I, too, would like to congratulate Tessa, Candace, Uritzi, and Chloe for receiving their compassionate student award. You know, the schools, and I'm sure it's a tough job for the schools to pick out representatives from each one of their schools, but this program, in conjunction with the school district, has been great. The superintendent's fully on board with it, and it's great to see these fine, young examples of leadership and compassion in the city. Last Friday, the police department held their annual awards ceremony, and it's always great to hear some of the stories of the bravery and service that our officers perform on a daily basis. And I'd especially like to congratulate Officer Eric Monson for being named the Officer of the Year. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. I don't know never where to start, but I'll begin thanking Councilman Mike McDermott for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. I was unable to attend the police awards ceremony on Friday due to conflicts, but I also extend my deepest gratitude and congratulations to Officer Eric Monson and entire Westland Police Department for all that they do. I think everyone definitely went ahead of me and explained as well as they can, so I can't do any better. I'd like to thank the deputy clerk for coming out and clerking today, so I think we had a lot of people running on standby, and I think you did a fantastic job, so thank you so much. Also, with regards to the Memorial Day Parade, my colleagues said it best, do come out. It's an actually fantastic time, and we do reserve it for honoring veterans. It's fun, but we also make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. As the senior vice commander of the Bova 9885, I do invite you to come out and participate. I also will say, please don't look for me this year, unfortunately. It'll be the first one I miss due to a memorial service I have to go to for a family member. But I will be there in spirit, and I will definitely be out on Memorial Day. But please do come out and do get there early. It does get pretty busy. And I think with that, I had touched on everything except for one. I'd like to wish the City of Westland a happy 56th birthday today. Today is our 56th birthday. 56 years ago, the residents of Nankin Township stood up and pushed back the annexation attempt of our neighbors to the north, and here we are, the City of Westland because of it. But last but not least, congratulations and good luck in the hookah lounge. I love seeing new business coming here in Westland. The only thing I love more than that is watching Westland residents opening a business here in Westland. You can't ask for anything more than the American dream for that, and we're all behind you. So congratulations. With that, is our motion to adjourn.